Good evening. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager for the City of Falls Church and I'm joined by Dr. Tony Jones. And we will join together on tonight's presentation. And I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I want to just acknowledge a few people in the crowd, and if I miss anybody, let me know. And then Mayor Tarter will make welcoming remarks. And then after that, we'll get underway with some slide presentations. We do have some city council members here and some school board members here. Our council members are Mary Beth Connolly and Karen Oliver and Letty Hardy. And Mr. Duncan, Phil Duncan is here, and of course Mayor Tarter, who will speak in just a moment. And our school board members are—
Erin Gill is here from the school board. And I think she's our only one tonight so far.
Okay. A lot of the purpose of tonight's meeting is to get information out to the public about where we are in the procurement process that we're trying to accomplish for a new high school, expanded middle school with associated economic development to help pay for a portion of those costs of that school program. But we also want to hear comments and input from you. And the city council members and the school board members will be listening very carefully to your comments and input tonight. Let me turn it over to Mayor Tarter for some welcoming comments.
He does need this mic if they're going to—
To get on the—
TV, yeah.
Okay, because they said this mic—
Is that one going to work as well?
Is this one? Okay, sounds good. Listen, now, thank you all for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it. I know that the PPEA process has been frustrating to some of you. It's not as transparent, as open, I think, as people would like to have it be. But we in council at least made a commitment to be as transparent and open as legally allowed. And so we wanted to have this forum tonight to give you an update, to the extent we're allowed to do so, given the rules of a PPEA, and to get your input and your feedback. We know this project's of great importance to our children, our citizens, our taxpayers, and the city's future. So we don't take that responsibility lightly. We actually spent the past two years with steering committee, the process planning committee, visioning process, meeting with the neighbors of this property, Womata, UVA, Virginia Tech, commissioning the Urban Land Institute study, and having a lot of closed sessions where we've wrestled with the details of these proposals. And I don't think I'm telling any secrets when I say it hasn't been a simple task. But we're here tonight to give you as much information as we can, and we'd love to have your feedback and your input. So thank you all for coming out this evening.
When we give our presentation tonight, everything that we present is going to be the result of our own thinking or input from our own consultants. The information that's been provided to us by the proposers as part of the procurement process is confidential. So anything that we say tonight is really kind of our opinion and sort of our own thoughts as to what we think is possible or likely through this process. Some of the key things we're going to talk about, which will be new in terms of if anyone came to the presentation back in December when we provided an update, is we will talk about what we think the expectation is for school costs. We will talk about what we think the expectations are for debt service. How much is this going to cost the taxpayers? And we'll give some ranges in terms of what we think the value of land would be if we were to sell or lease some land to help pay for the school, what we think some of the tax revenue could be, and how that all plays in in terms of how that might potentially lower the cost of the school. So we're going to share that information. But again, the caveat is, this is our own sort of internal thinking. It is not information provided to us by any of the proposers as part of this process. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones for an introductory slide.
Do you want to use the mic or not? You did break it.
I think these, that's what these are.
Just make sure they can hear. Just to start out, why do we need a new or renovated high school? And I'm going to apologize upfront because I see a lot of familiar faces tonight. So the beginning of the presentation, many of you have seen in some of the other town halls that we have done. But we feel like it's really important every time we present to take you back through what the process has looked like because we know we always have some new faces in the crowd. So just as a reminder, why do we need a new or renovated high school? George Mason is at capacity today. And a lot of people don't realize that because we do have trailers that help us at George Mason. MEH is about 50 students shy of being at capacity in this building. We also at George Mason have a lot of facility needs. It's an incredibly challenging building for us right now. It was built in 1954, so your air conditioning system, your HVAC system, is failing. It needs a complete new roof. It also has wiring issues for the modern world. Most of our classrooms at Mason have one or two outlets. And if you can imagine that in the digital age, it's difficult. We also know that the building is half the size that it needs to be for the projected growth in enrollment going forward. In addition, it has poor ADA access. The building has a tremendous amount of just hallways and steps and issues with it that make it an incredibly challenging building. It also needs upgraded safety features. We have a very outdated intercom system. And I know those of us that remember our high school days, you tend to just think of morning announcements when you think of intercom. But when you have a safety situation in a building, your intercom system is critical. We also need door control, better access. And I'm going to tell you honestly, I've never counted every door. I have people who say they have, and it's between 75 and 95 doors at George Mason. It's an incredibly difficult building to secure. And we also need a central enter and exit point. And if you go into any new high school today, you'll see the security right when you walk in the door is very controlled, and that's to keep our children safe. So that's just a reminder why we're in the middle of this project right now.
To get to this point, and these also will be familiar, but when the water sale agreement was implemented, immediately after that, the city council and the school board began working together to plan out how we will handle the campus and what the campus needs. And so the city council and the school board created a steering committee that had members of the planning commission, city council, school board, economic development authority to lay out what's a planning process that we can use for the campus site. And they met for over 12 months in putting together a roadmap for considering the campus. Did a number of pieces of work, and I'll go through in a little bit more detail in terms of what we learned through the steering committee's work. But that involved outreach, space fit analysis, working with Urban Land Institute to think through the economic viability of the site. And as we were going through this study process, the city received an unsolicited proposal to build a new school and also have a portion of the campus site for private economic development. That was considered for a matter of months. The decision was not to accept that unsolicited proposal, and the decision instead was to issue a competitive request for proposals under the Virginia Public Private Infrastructure and Education Act. And that Phase One RFP was issued last summer, in July of 2015. We received two proposals in response to that RFP. They came in on October 30th. And they're from Mason Greens and from Edgemore. And they have, these two proposals have been under review. The city has a team of staff plus outside consultants to help us with that review. And we're looking at our financial modeling, fiscal impact analysis, commercial real estate transactional advice. Arcadis is the school's owner's rep for our public-private construction program. And those are the key members of our team. And so what we tried to accomplish with that Phase One RFP, what we stated as our goals, was to replace or renovate the high school, expand Mary Ellen Henderson. And we put out there that we could develop up to 10.38 acres for commercial uses that will benefit the city and its residents and will encourage economic development in the western part of the city. And that 10.38 acres goes back to the boundary adjustment agreement with Fairfax County. That is the maximum amount of the school campus that could be used for commercial purposes. It also turns out as a practical matter, that's very much the upper limit as a practical matter, which could be used for commercial uses and still have a good campus layout. Our goals were to maximize not just the short term, but the long-term financial benefit for the city. And that really gets important when you think about deal structure and in terms of what types of uses, if we were to have commercial uses up here on the site, what types of uses would generate the best long-term benefit for the city. And the last goal was to maximize competition. Competition is the best way for the city to accomplish its goals in an affordable way. So now what is being considered is the Phase Two of that procurement process. We got conceptual plans in, we're evaluating those, asking questions. The next step in this process would be to issue a request for detailed proposals. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But one of the reasons we're having this session and the one next week is that the city council and the school board will be considering taking that step, that next step in the procurement process on April 11th and 12th. And if they decide to do so, we would issue that RFDP, Request for Detailed Proposals, in April. What I'd like to do is just go through some basic information first, and then we're going to have a good opportunity for questions and comments afterwards. So what the Phase Two procurement process would allow the city to do is provide more direction to the proposers, spell out some of the terms and requirements that the city would have. Now, we'll say that the school program was laid out in great detail in the first RFP, and there'll be some modifications to that. But the school program is quite detailed in this procurement process. The economic development piece, we have been more open in inviting the market to give us ideas in terms of what they think the market would support for economic development on the site. But the basic goal is to provide direction and allow the proposers to provide more detail for the city. As part of this step also, it does involve a public hearing before the city council would consider accepting one or the other of the two proposers as the preferred proposer and go into detailed negotiations with them. So this basic schedule was adopted last May. We have kept essentially to this schedule, although we're taking more time than originally planned to evaluate the two proposals and do our own analysis of them. But essentially, what the schedule going forward was that if the council and school board elect to take that step to issue the Phase Two RFP, that would be done in April. Then we would get responses back in the spring and summer, and we'll evaluate those. And then if a decision is made to select the top-ranked respondent, to begin negotiations on a comprehensive agreement. It has always been part of the planning that there would be a referendum before anything is finalized. So any interim agreement that was reached in the summer months would only be ratified if the voters approve it and approve the debt issuance that would be associated with it. One thing that I would note really importantly in this schedule is that if we do arrive at a comprehensive agreement, there would then be time to begin a very public land use approval process, an entitlement process through the zoning process with the planning commission and all of our boards and commissions about what exactly the commercial development would be. And that's a process that the city's very familiar with as we've dealt with development proposals in the past. That would happen, really, we would expect it would take a full year, so that would wrap up in the June timeframe of 2017, and that would be a very public process. So that's a quick overview of some of the process steps getting to this point. This is a map of the campus, and I'm going to turn it to Dr. Jones.
One of the first tasks that we started as a steering committee was really looking at the space fit analysis. When you look at the footprint of those two buildings, the one on the left is MEH, the one on the right is George Mason. There's only about 100,000 square feet difference in the two buildings, but you'll notice how much bigger George Mason looks. And that's what they call the footprint of the building. And it's just because it's sprawling instead of going up like MEH. So one of the very first questions we really needed to answer, knowing what the water agreement allowed us to do, was, could 70% of the land, is that enough to accommodate a high school for 1,500 students for future growth on the land that we have? And the answer that we got back after working with a professional firm called RTKL was yes, it can be done by compacting your high school, just like we've done with our 21st Century Middle School. The next question was, where could you put commercial development? Is that possible to have commercial development next to a school and have that function well on this piece of property? And RTKL came back and looked at what they shared with us, were basically two different zones on the campus where that could happen. Where you see the red, that 10.4 acre is over on the football side section, and that is one area that they determined, yes, you could develop there. And I'm going to go back to the one before this, I think actually showed, where you see the 10.4 acres here on the right-hand side, that was the second zone, which is towards Haycock. So they determined that, in fact, those were the two areas that they would see most viable for development, and that yes, we actually could develop up to 10 acres. And I say up to because it could be five, it could be six, it could be seven, but 10 would be the maximum. Yeah, I get you. You did that one.
Task two of the steering committee was to engage with our neighbors. And so some of the key neighbors for this site, of course, is the UVA-Virginia Tech site. That's a total of about eight acres of land. Womata owns about 24 acres of land. And this is all in Fairfax County, so we've been in discussions with Fairfax County and with our neighbors just to let them know what our planning process is and encourage them to participate in it with us. These are all very big institutions that have their own timeframes and their own time schedules for making decisions. And to date, we have not had any real active agreement on their parts to say, you know, we want in, or we want to make sure that our development, our redevelopment of our land happens at the same time as what the city is planning. But they're certainly aware of what we're doing, and we've invited their involvement and participation. Task three for the steering committee was to do some market analysis for the site. And we invited the Urban Land Institute to do a technical assistance panel, and many in this room witnessed that and participated in it. And their report is on the city's webpage. But they basically concluded that this is a very valuable site. What they envisioned the market would want to build on a portion of the campus site would be mixed-use development. They envisioned that the most viable area of the campus was at the Haycock and West Broad intersection. They envisioned that to be the most viable from a commercial and retail perspective in particular. They pictured office and retail fronting on Haycock, perhaps hotel uses. They did picture retail on the first floor throughout. And they did suggest that it would need to have a very strong residential component if it were to be market viable. That was the independent group of folks from the Urban Land Institute and their conclusions. They did some financial modeling as well. And they modeled out that they expected that about one-half to two-thirds of the school expansion or new high school and Mary Ellen Henderson expansion could be paid for through a land exchange plus tax yield from this development. One-half to two-thirds is what they concluded about a year and a half ago when they did their study. And then task four on the visioning process.
We set out to really try to gather lots of community input on what do we want to see in a new high school and what do we want to see come out of this project. We started with a very large, community-wide visioning, and it was actually here. And I recognize many of the faces that are in this room. They were actually at that event. There were almost 200 people. It was a fantastic event. We also held stakeholder meetings in June. And this was, again, done by a professional firm that does this. It was not done by staff. And we also had online feedback forums, which we were allowed to get a tremendous amount of information from people who couldn't attend at that first visioning. On the second visioning, we held School of the Future visioning. We had architects here, we had sustainability experts here with us, really looking at the property and what does the 21st Century High School need to look like? Not today, but we've got to build, we need to build a building that's going to get us 30, 40. And if it's typical school, probably 50 years. So we really talked a lot about that day. What should a future high school look like? And again, we had a tremendous turnout. This room was full. It was a great, great Saturday morning. We had online feedback forums for that as well. We also, following that meeting, met with all of our teachers and our construction management team. And one of the architects also was involved, meeting with every department at the high school, meeting with the administrative team. And those were fantastic meetings. It took a lot of time, but the teachers gave us great input on what they want to see in their high school as far as what do they need in a space that they don't have now? How does technology impact, like we mentioned earlier, not having the outlets? You know, we need lots of outlets. But they gave us feedback on items such as, I would really, I could bike to work, but there's nowhere to shower. Where in a 21st century building, if you're going to ride your bike to work, a lot of them would like to be able to shower. So just thinking about how you can incorporate the locker room area and have it accessible in that format, those were even some really small things that were very helpful for us to hear from staff. We then did, we had an oral report for city council and also the school board on July 7th. There was a written report that was made available back in July, and that's still on the web. And you can actually watch the videos of any of these meetings as well. And then in November, we followed that up with the written report from the School of the Future at that visioning. And this is just kind of to give you a glimpse of what the room looked like. And I hope when we have another one of these, and I think we're kind of addicted to them now because it's just a great way to get input from the community. And we've had fantastic turnout, the schools have, over the last really two to three years that we've been hosting these. And at this one, we had city council, school board, school committees and organizations. We had parents, residents, and as Wyatt mentioned, the outreach. We had Fairfax County staff here, we had staff from Womata, and also from the Virginia Tech and UVA building. So again, just a really large outreach and bringing lots of people together. And we really had five focus areas early on before we were putting that first RFP together. And the first one was school design. What does our community say about the height of a building? There are schools that are 10 stories. There are schools that are two stories. What is our comfort zone? And in that visioning, really hearing from lots of different people, we knew about four stories, and four to six is where it came in, but it was pretty strong to stay around four stories for students. And if you were going to have a fifth story, that might be more of an administrative level or something of that nature. Landscape and sustainability. Our community spoke loudly and clearly that they don't want to lose green space for students, so the design has to be very thoughtful. And when we met with our students, it was interesting, but like the senior courtyard, that's really important to them, and they want to make sure in a new building that doesn't go away. Side access and circulation. How are we going to get traffic in and out? And any of you who try to park here on one of these busy, busy nights know what traffic can be like. So how can we enhance that going forward, knowing that the campus is going to almost double in size with student population? And then also the middle school expansion approach. And one of the questions we wanted answered was, do we want more connection between our middle school and our high school building? And that's something that, from a curriculum issue, has a lot of strength. And what we can do, where our eighth graders have more access to high school advanced curriculum, sharing staff more openly, a lot of benefits. But do we want a connection? People that have been in Falls Church for a long time know that we had at one time six through 12 buildings. And so that was very normal. So when we went to this middle school back in 2006, that was a different concept for us. And so do we want to connect those? And what came out of that meeting is, we still want a middle school, we still want a high school, but we would love to have them physically connected somehow so that we can use the facilities in both buildings. And then also adjacent development. What came out again of that visioning is making sure that we're very thoughtful about what is next to children, what types of development there would be, and where that would be located on the campus. And again, great, great feedback from our community. We also know that we need to build or expand for 1,500 students. And this number comes from growth projections. Every October, we contract with the Weldon Center at UVA who do demographics. They also do the demographics for the Virginia Department of Education. And they look at the actual birth rate in Falls Church City and drill down to actually children who are born to parents have addresses here. On top of that, we also work very closely with the city staff to follow all of the development that is happening in the city, whether that's condos, apartments, or single-family homes. Right now, we know our largest driver, it's still, and it really hasn't changed, is single-family homes. And any of you that have been on your street for any time, because I hear this all the time, you'll have six houses, and there used to be one house with children, and now there's five houses with children out of six. So that is our biggest driver in the city. But we do track every single-family home address where our children are coming from and how many children come from all of the different developments. So that we're trying to project to the very best of our ability what we're going to need, again, a decade or two decades from now. When you look at the natural growth trend, I know a lot of you have seen this slide, but it's important to note that as the City of Falls Church is also growing, what you're looking at is that bottom blue line. But what's happening with the total population is the growth is made up of children. So in the old days, before the schools were growing or enrollment was growing, we might have had four people move into the city, and it may have been four adults. Now we're having four people move into the city, and two of those are children. So the total growth of the city is growing, but you'll notice the top line is the growth with children. And so when we talk about projecting out, that's why we need to build our school to hold us for the future. Otherwise, when it opens, we'll be like a lot of our neighboring school districts where you build your building, and unfortunately, it happens in schools because of finance, usually. You build smaller because that's what you can afford. But we are trying to make sure we're being thoughtful about school enrollment growth. When you look at the strategic thought process, the city estimated cost for our school program, and again, this is an expert number, we have consultants that are working with us. We know that the $105 million is what we've had in our CIP for several years for George Mason High School and to also do an expansion here at Mary Ellen Henderson. We know that that number has been validated by several different consultants. Arcadis most recently ran numbers again. And the reason we feel like they were able to give us really good numbers two and three years ago about what needed to go in the CIP is because they were projecting out and looking, if you don't build for four or five years, we had planned for that additional construction cost that would be added in. So that number is still holding true for us right now. We also know we need another $7 million for your, what they call FFNE, and that's all of your equipment and furnishing and fixtures. When you add a new science lab, you need science tools. So you have all kinds of things like that with the new school that we will need. So what is included in the cost estimate? And I think this is probably, this is a new slide, so those of you that are here tonight that have been in previous haven't seen this. So when you look inside the request for proposal and what is in there right now that we would have in a new high school, George Mason would have 303,000 square feet of instructional space. MEH expansion is 16,770 square feet. And if you look on, if we get to the detailed phase and that detailed RFP is out there in the public, you can actually see what every little square foot, you know, how many classrooms is that? How many restrooms? It literally is broken down by every space. We also have a 750-seat auditorium, which is growing our high school auditorium by a third. Right now, it seats right around 500. There's a theater, scene, shop, and workroom, and this is not meant to be inclusive. It's just trying to give you a big-picture idea from the different departments and what was real important to them to include. The black box theater is a smaller theater area, so when they're doing their drama productions during the school day, it could be an after-school production, they have that kind of built into their instructional space. The kiln room is something that we know we want going forward. We have four art and design labs, and they're not just called art rooms anymore because even art is changing in how they approach teaching art. We also have two project-based learning labs. These are on top of your biology, chemistry, physics labs. So these are very much project-based learning spaces for our students. And of course, we have a media center planned as well. The second turf field is something that's very important to those that have an interest in athletics that is in the RFP. And again, that allows our athletes, and especially as we grow, to have ample space, not only for practice, but also for competition. So this turf field could be used for competition. Has a community gym with an elevated running surface. This was something I thought was a great idea, and it was actually pretty strong that came out of the visioning, is that during the winter months in Falls Church, we don't really have community use where people can go and walk, when you want to kind of stay in shape, and making sure that what we would call an auxiliary gym or community use gym, you could have park and rec kids playing down below while parents and community members are able to walk and access that in the evenings. Trying to be very thoughtful, again, about community use of the facilities. Also having a competition gym, as you know, our high school students come across to our middle school, and that's not always easy, because when you're trying to schedule the same space, and especially as you grow, if high school has something here, middle school can't. So again, that's a competition gym that becomes part of their high school. And the competition gym will actually seat their high school. So you can have your pep assembly for 1,500 students and have that in your high school, for high school culture. Looking at the training room, life skills transition center. This is something that we currently don't have, that you will find if you have a brand-new high school. And this is a transition center, for our students who have special needs, who many of them stay with us until they are with 21 and 22, and we transition them for life skills and work skills. And so having a transition center for our students is something that would be highly valued for our school system. Also, our special education sensory room. Most new high schools, middle schools, elementaries actually now have sensory rooms, and our foundation actually just founded, I think, a sensory room, I'm trying, was it at TJ? It was here at MEH, that's right. And so that is something, again, that is part of an instructional, 21st century instruction that's very important for a population of our students. Dining and community commons area that can be used by the community, also be used by our students. The senior courtyard, and I put that up there again because it was really important to our students. Central office relocation. In this, the first RFP and also in the detailed RFP, it calls to move our central office to our high school, and it's probably, most likely going to be like on the top level, which our community want, and not down on the bottom. So your administrators are taking the elevators, are taking the stairs. But that is so we can move our offices where we currently pay rent, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars, because you know rent in Falls Church is not cheap. So the long-term benefit pays for itself quite fairly quickly, actually. And then also LEED Silver certification. And this has been something with our previous projects where there's been quite a bit of debate, because we will build to LEED standard, but we have not gone through commissioning. And it was pretty strong, again, when we had our School of the Future, that our community and the school board and the city council would like this building to be LEED Silver and go through commissioning. And then in addition to that, just a reminder, is a 1,500 high school. Now what's not included, and this is new, again, and it's real important, I think, that the community understands this slide, because we're talking about building a high school and an expansion for the middle school, but the swimming pool is not included. Doesn't mean it couldn't be a separate project, or that when we get into the design, we can know where a pool at some point could be in the community, but the pool additional cost would be between 10 and 15 million dollars. So again, that would be one of those community discussion items between now and even going into the summer, if people think that that's something we really want. But you, the pool also has upkeep costs that come with it, that you have to look at the operational side. So that's the one thing I think is important, that people would like a pool, but it's one of those extras. The 1,500-seat auditorium is where we started. If you had looked at the RFP back, maybe, well, when it was issued, my months are running together, but it is now 750. And that, again, is just trying to make sure that we're coming in not only on the size of the building and getting the cost where it needs to be. And so our auditorium, just to be clear, is 750, because you could have seen a 1,500 auditorium at some point. To be determined, sustainability and energy conservation, do we go above and beyond LEED Silver in any of our areas? And those of you that were at the second visioning meeting, we had just phenomenal presentations about district energy. And actually, I know Mary Beth was there today, Mr. Shields and I, and I know Mr. Lawrence, school board member who snuck in in the back, were in a great presentation that the city had organized today, looking at district energy. So those are things that we will continue to work on, but you can't do that component until you actually get to the point that you're working with somebody who's working on the project with us. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Shields for debt service.
All right, this is the fun part. So we have just four more slides, or maybe five, and then we will have questions and answers and discussion. So what does, how do you finance $112 million? And that's the crux of the matter. It's not easy. It's going to be very hard to do. If we were to assume 4% interest, 30-year debt, and level debt service, the cost for that would be $6 million per year. The city's entire debt service for all of the built environment that we have, that we've issued debt for over the past 20 years, is currently $6 million. And so if we structured it along these terms, we'd essentially double our debt service with this one project. Now, it would take 15 cents on the tax rate for us to pay $6 million of additional debt service. And that assumes there's no land exchange and there's no economic development. So that's if you just played it straight with 30-year debt, that's what it would cost. Now, this is a chart of the city's debt service, and let's spend a little bit of time with this chart, because there's a lot of things going on with it. But so this is, this is the city's existing debt service. This is sort of, this is all the stuff that we have issued over the last 20 years. It's the blue tranches here, and they step down at different periods of time. For instance, this is when Mary Ellen Henderson comes off the books in 2026. So our current debt service is at $6 million, just over 6 million. We do have other things in our CIP in addition to the George Mason High School project. Those include the city hall public safety project. This is the debt service for that. That's about 2 cents on the tax rate. We have the library here, expansion and renovation of the library that would begin in 2020. That's about 2 cents on the tax rate. So the rest of the CIP in and of itself is about 6 cents on the tax rate. And then the high school project would be 15 cents, as I indicated earlier. So this line right here is the city council's adopted policy in terms of the maximum debt service that we should have as a city. We've established that policy that no more than 12% of our annual budget should be for debt service alone. And that's the basic just financial metric that is a sign of fiscal health. So we would go past that policy, obviously, but the more fundamental issue is affordability. So what are some things that we're thinking about in terms of how we can mitigate that cost? A couple of things that we have, as I mentioned earlier, the Urban Land Institute projected that through the land sale, the land exchange, whether it's a lease or sale, could generate funds plus tax revenue from that economic development that might cut that debt service by one-half to two-thirds. Our own consultants have confirmed, they think that those scenarios, we've run scenarios where we think that's plausible. So if that is plausible, then what we think would probably be the best case, and a lot of things can change, but just in terms of modeling, we think that if the development paid for essentially two-thirds of the cost of the debt service, one-third would be absorbed by the taxpayers, and that's 5 cents on the tax rate. And so those are some things that we're working through right now, and we wanted to share that with the public, just so you understand, well, these are some parameters to think about as we move forward with this. The key takeaway is, we don't think that economic development would pay for the whole high school. And we also know that the economic development needs to go through the test of whether it's acceptable to the community in terms of aesthetics and design and the types of uses that the community is looking for on this really important piece of ground in the city. And of course, it has to be marketable. It has to meet the market test. And so those are some key things. Another key point that we think is important for the taxpayers to be aware of, that if we were to go to referendum and ask for the voters' approval for this issuance of debt for this project, my recommendation to the city council would then be to immediately, or as soon as practical in terms of the budget process, move to increase the tax rate for the project to build capital reserves even in advance of issuing the debt, so that we would go into issuance of the debt with a financial cushion to, in particular, to bridge the gap in those years when we're paying debt service on this project and before the economic development comes online and is really paying the taxes. So capital reserves is a key piece of this that would need to be part of the budget in FY '18, i.e. next spring, will need to be a big part of budget discussions if this project is to go forward. Now, what is the economic value of the city land? Well, value is determined entirely by the density and the types of uses and the nature of the transaction. Those are three big variables that are not determined yet and would be determined through this procurement process if we're successful. But let's make a couple of assumptions. Let's assume that we had a million square feet of development on the site, and that could fit on six acres, it could fit on 10 acres. But what really drives value is what's happening on the land. If it were on six acres, a million square feet would be an FAR of about 3.9, if people are familiar with FARs. That would be denser than is typical for the city. If it were on eight acres, it would be an FAR of under three. That's actually is pretty typical for development in the city. So eight acres might be a sweet spot in terms of having development on this site, but that also is to be determined through this process. 10 acres would be a lower FAR at a million square feet. But at any rate, that would generate between 37 and 43 million dollars in terms of a land transaction, whether it was structured as a lease or a sale, that's about a range of what the value would be under that development scenario. The key thing to understand, however, is that what the market wants to build right now is mixed-use development. What the city wants is commercial development that will pay taxes over the long haul. But right now, we believe, and ULI confirmed this, and other experts have confirmed this, that in today's environment, a development proposal is going to have a significant residential component. And so I think that's important for the public to be aware of as well. Now, if we were to do a deal structure with this, it's very likely that payments would be spread out over multiple years. It's a big piece of land to take down, so those payments would be phased over multiple years, probably be a phased development. And it could be structured either as a land lease or a fee simple sale, and there are pros and cons to either approach, and we're going through that analysis as part of this overall process. So this is our last slide, you know, some of the key things that we wanted to communicate out, what we think, based on our own independent evaluation and our own experts, what we think a school cost is likely to be, 112 million, which does not include a pool, but does meet the school's program requirements. A public-private partnership, we're talking about six to 10 acres of land in commercial development. The current market calls for mixed-use development with a significant residential component, and we're estimating one-half to two-thirds of the cost of the school program being covered under development under these types of scenarios. And so that's information we wanted to get out. All of this information and all the background information is on the city's webpage at the campus redevelopment site, and comments can be sent in at any time to the city clerk, and they'll be distributed fully to the school board and the city council, any comments that come in. But now, at this point in the program, we do want to ask for questions or comments and get your feedback on this. And you had your hand up first, yes, ma'am.
You all the way back, but when you issued the original RFP, how many organizations did you send in to, and why do you think you only got one back?
We did, I think, a good effort at publicity for the RFP. We had public information sessions, we were soliciting people's input, and we did some after-action sort of reviews as to, we got two proposals, two very solid and very responsive proposals, but why didn't we get more? And I would assess it this way, that this is a complex project. There's a big universe of entities that would love to build us a high school, and there's a big universe of entities that would love to take down six to 10 acres of land and do a master plan and build it and reap the rewards from that. It's a very small universe of entities that have the financial wherewithal and the patience and the skill to do both, and to do both in a very competent manner. And so we do, we got two very, I think, strong proposals, and that's why we are taking them very seriously.
So now that you have more detailed requirements, and probably have more information now for bidders, would you or have you already considered sending out, you said you were going to get bids from the two folks that responded to the RFP, but have you considered now sending out a revised RFP with more detailed specs in it to get more back from other possible contracts?
We've considered that, but it's, we are not, I'm not recommending that course of action, and I think it's really for the reasons that I stated earlier. It's, I think it's a pretty small universe of entities that would want to participate in a project that has these two big and fairly complex components with them.
Okay. I just feel like it sounds like we're missing other bids out there, that now that we have more requirements, you might get more perspectives on it and different prices.
Well, I think when the council considers taking the next step in the Phase II procurement, and the school board as well, I think those types of questions have been part of the deliberation. And so I think the decision really will be whether to continue with the procurement process or whether to take a step back and consider other options. But we do have two responsive proposals, and we've certainly given them serious attention. Yes, sir.
I want to ask what the city envisions, or you envision, as the time for completion of a commercial project, if one is approved and chosen? And when the revenue would start being, would begin to start being generated for the commercial aspect of the project? And what happens if we have a major recession in the interim? Which is, I mean, which is highly likely in the next two or three years, given what I know about business cycles. I just looked at that this afternoon, I can expand on that. And what guarantees do we have that the development group will not back out, as happened when we had, as happened in the case of the planned city center development?
Those are all really good questions, and I think that probably the crux of our challenge is that we have a school occupying the site today where the market believes is the highest value for commercial development. So by necessity, the school project has to go first, and then the commercial development comes second. So the crux of the matter is, how do you bridge that period of time between when you're on the hook for $112 million of debt for a school project, but before you get the benefits of economic development? It is, it's my view that we have a chance to close that gap to acceptable levels through the P3 process. If we were to decouple it and just do a school project and master plan the process and then take it to market, I think the preponderance of risk is that that gap between doing the school project and getting the benefits of economic development would be longer. It'd be a more difficult bridge to cross for us financially. But you've put your finger, really, I think, on the crux of the matter from a risk perspective for the city, and a big part of our effort is to find out ways that we can reasonably mitigate that risk. And that's not to say it's an easy thing to do.
But could you give us a range in terms of years between what you would expect the commission type project with the motion?
Well, in, in the Phase II RFP, we are working through ways that we can try to close that gap in ways that are acceptable. And we're still working through these, so we're not, you know, finalizing exactly how that would be. But one way that we think would be helpful would be that before the city issues any debt for the high school project, that an initial payment by our private partner is made to the city, not in the form of a deposit, but in the form of an equity payment for the city, not in the form of a deposit, but in the form of an equity payment for the land. That that would be a Form A of providing the city with resources to help bridge that gap for the debt service, but also would be a very strong bond that would guarantee, it'd be a form of a guarantee of the future performance of the private developer. But managing that risk is a hard and complex thing to do, and that's really what we're probing and exploring through this process. And it has to be, at the end of the day, it has to be acceptable.
In terms of timing, if the planning of the commercial is done while the school is being built, that comes online in 2019.
Yeah.
It's going to take two to three years to build, even if you tear down the high school the next day.
That's right.
So revenue is three, four years out from 2019.
Yeah, the tax revenue is three years out.
From 2019.
That's right. Land exchange revenues, we will be pushing for it to be pushed forward. And that will be a very, that'll be, I'm sure, a tough-nosed negotiation through this process. But I think that's the city's interest and one that we'll be working on.
Mr. Shields, Dr. Jones, if I could ask, they would ask, like, for us to record the questions to the best of our ability, so Mr. Harris will be on that side, I'll be on this side, and we'll pass the microphone around. We'll try to catch our attention. We'll bring the mic to you.
Very good.
Yeah, because if you don't, if the questioner doesn't speak into the microphone, then people who watch the tape can't hear the question.
That is correct. Thank you.
My question was something Wyatt, you said at the very beginning, and so I have a follow-up question. You mentioned Arcadis. Can you just repeat what their role is in this project? Are they?
Would you like to speak to that?
They are actually the construction management firm right now, and so they help put the program together as far as what all of, well, everything that you see in the RFP is very detailed, down to the square feet, looking at, making sure the non-program spaces like halls, all of those things are incorporated, looking at the specs. If we, in our science labs, making sure that we have the right amount of gas that you need in a high school chemistry lab, all of those extreme, extremely, extremely detailed. That's been the role up to this point, is really helping us with that RFP and putting that whole, and it's about that thick, that aspect of the school together for the new high school.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question about, wasn't Arcadis the construction manager on the Mount Daniel project? And so if that's the case, was that, was there any consideration of a new firm? And if not, why not? And would you have considered putting that out? Did that go out for bid for three other companies to have that opportunity?
We absolutely did consider that, and we did it. We put out an RFP, and we actually jointly actually interviewed for new firms and went through that whole process. And in the end, they were determined that they were, in fact, the firm that we selected. And that was for a variety of reasons. But they have done tremendous work in the city of Falls Church. They actually were construction management for this building, where we had cost savings. And I'm hoping if we build a high school, maybe that will happen again. We, they were also our firm at TJ on Task One and Task Two. We had cost savings on both of those. They were the firm at Thackeray, and again, did a tremendous job at Thackeray. And at Mount Daniel right now, what I would say is the 2232, we haven't started the actual construction of the building, and I feel like they do a phenomenal job at that. We are working with Grunley as a construction firm, and Samaha is an architecture firm. They are the ones that are actually responsible for submitting the 2232 to Fairfax County. And they have a tremendous amount of experience working with Fairfax County. I think that Mount Daniel project, we're in a very unique situation. And I don't think that, looking at what Arcadis' performance has been thus far, has actually, they've done a good job for us on Mount Daniel, even though we're in the situation that we're in. We're at the mercy of the player, you know, Fairfax Planning Commission, and I'm not sure if we had any of the other firms that we interviewed, that we would be in any different position.
Okay. Thanks.
Couple of questions. Wyatt, one of your slides showed land that's leased to Virginia Tech. And if you could tell us, what are the terms of that lease? How long does it run? And a second sort of follow-up question, the complex slide that you had on all of the outstanding bonds, the money that we owe, how much of that represents Mount Daniel? And when does that run out? And if it falls through, that we can't build up at Mount Daniel, aren't we talking about additional expenses that will have to be bonded?
Let me take the two questions. First, in terms of the land, the UVA tech site is really these two parcels. UVA owns this parcel itself. This parcel is leased to UVA and Virginia Tech. The key terms of that lease are that they have an option to purchase, which goes, which begins in the year 2021. And it's a good option for them, and so effectively, they have control of that property. The, you know, the terms of that deal with the city's real consideration back in the 90s for this parcel of land was a land swap for the Whittier School Site. And, but that's kind of history at any rate. But we view this land as essentially under UVA and Virginia Tech's control. But our lines of communication are very open with them in terms of trying to gather what their future plans are. And they're planning, but they don't yet have, they haven't determined what their future plans are.
You said they have an option to purchase. Is it at a set price that they can purchase, or is it negotiated?
No, the lease terms has a set price. It's, if my recollection is correct, it's $3 million with an escalator. So the principal consideration was the land exchange. The $3 million is in addition to that. It's very valuable land, obviously. On the question of debt service, the Mount Daniel debt service is in our existing debt service. So Mount Daniel's a $15 million project. $1 million of that was issued in debt, I think, three years ago. $4 million of it will be covered through developer proffers, and $10 million was issued December a year ago. And so that is in this blue section. And that total of $11 million in debt is the equivalent of about $800,000 a year in debt service. And, you know, so the question on that, I don't know if this is, really is your question, but why was that debt issued? And the schools do manage their construction program. The city handles the financing on the city's side. I was recommending the issuance of the debt essentially on a calculation of interest rate risk. Our advisors were telling us that the principal thing to be concerned about for a project that has been approved by the voters and that is going to go forward is that delay is more likely, or the preponderance of risk is that you'd have a higher interest rate if you wait to issue the debt. So we took that action. If we were to need to, you know, depending on how things go with the county, go back to the drawing board, there will be expenses and unwinding or defusing that debt and putting it to a different purpose. But we will, we've done initial analysis of that. I think the intention is to proceed and complete the school. And that is, that is the school board's intention and the school board's plan. But if there are other contingencies, we will, we'll need to work those out. Yes?
I have a couple of questions for you, Wyatt. You used 20 years, we normally borrow 20 years and use 30 years. I ran the numbers at 20 years, and the actual number for the debt service is not $6 million, it would be closer to $10 million. So the numbers differ right there.
You're posing that we should do a 20-year debt instead of 30-year debt?
Well, it's cheaper.
Right.
It's cheaper. You do 30 years, you pay a lot of extra interest costs.
Right.
And somebody's got to pay for that. Now, one question. When you say level payment, level principal payment or level debt service payment?
I knew you were going to ask that question. And this is a point, what the city typically does to structure our debt, for instance, all of this debt would be 20-year debt structured at level principal. That's our, sort of our basic way we structure debt. It's a very conservative way, and I believe a very appropriate way, to structure debt. For a project of this size, from a, given its size, what we are modeling here is obviously longer-term, 30-year debt and level debt service. So what that means is that your principal payments, it's just like your mortgage, you know, your, most of your principal is being paid out here, and up here in the beginning is where your principal, your interest is being paid. It'd be very much like a home mortgage. We're doing it that way with an eye towards feasibility. Over the long term, it is a more expensive way to do it. But that initial period is such a challenge that we think that, A, it's within the bounds of responsible finance, but B, is necessary for this to be in the realm of what's achievable for the city.
At that point, though, I have to say, you may believe it to be reasonable, others may think it's not such a great idea. The other question is, at best, it's capital costs that will be covered, maybe two-thirds by the development. Who's going to cover and how are we going to cover the extra $20 to $25 million in operating costs when it's at full capacity? Where does that money come from?
Yeah, we are just, we're talking about a capital finance plan. And the operating budgets, like, in a model like this, the operating budgets need to be handled through the budgetary process. This is strictly a debt service and a capital modeling effort. And so it's a good question, but, you know, that's handled through the annual budget process.
My question is, if we talk about the capital costs, the operational costs, we're looking at maybe a potential tax rate of 1.5 or higher. So has anyone done any studies to know at what point do we start losing residents to neighboring jurisdictions because our tax rate is too high?
Well, you know, there's probably not a science to that. I think that's something that in our system of government, our elected bodies have to really feel what is affordable for the taxpayers and what is beyond what's affordable. The, what we're trying to balance here, though, is we do have, we have an old school campus that does need investment, and we're trying to figure out ways that we can accomplish that investment in a way that's affordable for the taxpayers. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to lay out what are some of the issues that we're grappling with in terms of trying to accomplish a strategy to do that. Yes, ma'am.
So have you contemplated the possible increased cost of security of the school campus grounds when there's going to be mixed-use facilities in front of it?
To be honest, from the, from the school side, I feel like the security we have right now, that we wouldn't need to increase it. One of the biggest challenges we have is that Mason is so difficult to secure, and that's one reason we have, I want to say five or six total. And we have moved to outsource our security, which has, you know, brought the cost down instead of hiring our own security. But what we have in place right now, we would actually, I think we would just maintain it.
So we wouldn't necessarily be putting up some sort of barrier between the school grounds and all that mixed-use space with a lot of pedestrian traffic going through the school grounds?
You know, and that's something that when we get into really working on the design, and we'll discuss all of those issues. But what I can say is, right now, we're next to the metro, where, you know, we have, we have businesses right across the street. We're a wide-open campus right now. And we, that's one of the reasons we increased security. We used to have, you know, one or two people on this campus, and we now make sure we are patrolling outside, you know, all day long. There are people that, they actually are on a rotational system. But again, it's, I feel like the security we have right now, and with a new high school, we would be in much better shape, even though the development may be a little bit closer. And when you cross the street, Giant's not that far away in that whole strip mall. And really...
But you won't get the same. So there's a lot of schools in Fairfax County that have security issues because it backs to a shopping center.
Right.
And they had to put up fences in order to stop the foot traffic of people walking through. Right now, that campus, there's no reason unless you're going to that high school or middle school to cross from the Giant over onto that space. And metro riders are not cutting through campus to get to the metro because it's not quite that close.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, and I think, they do. Yeah. And some, I know some of you probably remember a couple of years ago when I really wanted a fence on this campus. And it is because we were trying to go with limited security, the security we always had. And we have intruders that actually, and I'm not saying they're, most of them have mental health issues, that will come off of the street and come into our building, or they will be outside our doors, and, you know, we do have to call police. And so, I mean, we deal with that right now. And I think having a very secure high school where there's a central exit and an entrance, we know who's coming and who's going, would make a huge difference on this campus. And one of those decisions about, you know, would you want a fence to divide where the development is and where the school is, would be part of that whole design process. And with, anytime we're working on a school, we have what's called an ASAP committee. It has people from the community, it has teachers, it's a large group of people that are looking at, okay, what does the design look like? And what do we need to do to make sure the building's as safe as it can be? There are urban campuses, which is really where we are when we're located, that do have fences around them, and they can be beautiful and attractive. But will we choose to go that way? That would be very much a community decision in the design process.
Okay, so based on the fact, the way the RFP was written to couple the commercial development with the development of the school, so are we saying there is no option now, based on where we are, to redo the school without doing the development?
And Wyatt, I think that kind of goes back to this slide that Mr. Shields had. It's about cost, number one. If we don't do development, then we are bonding, you know, the full amount. And again, that's, I think, if, depending on where we are, if we did have a referendum in November, the voters would speak through the referendum. If what is proposed, they vote no or they vote yes. And that's kind of, I think, where we've been on that approach. Not that we couldn't do it. What I can say is, the question I get the most as a school superintendent is, can we just renovate and expand? But what people don't realize, again, is that we're at capacity now. So we're in a very different situation than the Fairfax County schools, where they have renovated some of their schools, but in some of their components, they didn't have to do a gut renovation. So they had portions where they kept their gym up, or they had a newer gym that wasn't built in the 50s, for instance. They didn't have to go in and gut the entire, literally rip everything out of the ceiling, put in new wiring, because we have a lot, our systems are all old. On top of that, we don't just need to add 60,000 square feet like they did. I want to say it's around, I actually have it in my hand, but I think it's around 60,000 square feet at Marshall. We're talking about, you know, 100, 150,000 square feet. So it's, the cost for us to renovate and expand, because we can't just renovate, really doesn't save us any money. And we have ran all of those numbers and done cost comparisons. And if you look at the Fairfax County projects, they're all around $100 million.
So your point of, your point of view right now, then, is you're saying the only way that we can pay for this is if we do development on that land?
I think that's, I would say that's up to the community. I mean, if the community speaks loudly and clearly that, which, the slide, I think, that you had up there with no development, $15, that this community said, we would, we'd be happy to pay $15. I can't imagine that, but I may be wrong. Then certainly, I mean, you could do a phased development and still knock that high school down and put a new high school right there. It wouldn't, you wouldn't have to just renovate and expand, even, because they almost cost the same. It just means you would phase it. You would build, for instance, part of an academic wing, move kids out of the high school instructional portion into the academic wing, and then come along and maybe do your gym thereafter. And phasing has a little bit more of an expense because you're stretching it out over a couple of years. And everybody is onsite more, so you have more salary, more everything. But we have ran all of those numbers as well.
I promised my last question. So if we, so if we were going to tear down the whole school, where do these students go in the interim?
Well, phasing, and what I will say, and I know Wyatt has mentioned this on both of these proposals, one of the key evaluation pieces is, who are the architecture firms that are in these proposals? And do we feel like they know how to build schools and they have experience building schools? And what I will say is, on both of these proposals, we have two outstanding architecture firms who have experience building schools, which means they understand about students and phasing. So that's part of the entire planning process. What do you build first? What do you build second? It's very likely that the way they place the, a new high school, for instance, on the building, can you not hear it?
Is it on?
Can you hear it now? When, it's very likely that if we were building a brand-new school, that the architects could actually design that so that our kids stay in that building, or the vast portion of it. You might lose like the auxiliary gym or something like that, and then you just move across. But again, it's all placement on the land, and both of these firms are expert at doing that. And phasing is really, really an important part of it, because we want as little disruption to our instructional environment as possible.
Yes, sir.
Can you speak more about the process going forward from here between now and November? Specifically, will Specifically, will the Phase II RFP, will that be publicly available and available for input before it's issued? And then what happens after that in terms of negotiation and referendum between now and November?
The RFP, Phase II RFP will be available to the public for comment on. We're working on it right now, and we're going to get it out to the public as quickly as we can. So if the council and school board elect to take that step and issue that Phase II RFP, then the proposers will have a period of time to respond to that. And we're working out how much time they should get for that. We want it to be shorter. I think they would like to have a little bit more time. We want, you know, good thoughtful responses, so we want them to have time. When we get them back, we will evaluate their detailed responses. That also still needs to be maintained confidential. I think the key thing, that if we were to move towards an agreement, that would be done after a public hearing. What the, what the agreement would do is set out sort of the key terms, sort of the basic structure. But then, from that point forward, there would be a very public process of the land entitlement process, which the EDA, Planning Commission, all of our boards and commissions would be involved in. And then the detailed school design phase, which also would be done in a manner that's very similar to those that have participated in prior school design efforts. So what we're, what we're working towards is the basic framework for a deal structure. There would be contention upon entitlements happening successfully, school design happening successfully, the voters approving it in November, and then execution of a comprehensive agreement. And again, one thing that the city is working towards is that the deal structure would be such that there would be an equity relationship between the developer and the city, prior to the city taking on the obligation for debt. But that's, you know, that's an important thing that we don't have resolved and naturally wouldn't have resolved at this part in the process, but I put out there, I think, is important for the feasibility of the project. Where's the microphone?
Oh, I'm actually next. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I have two questions. The first one, it could just be a really short answer. You said you were going to try to do the, and I apologize if I'm not using the exact right terms, but you're going to go for lead silver certification. And so it's that last piece where you get the actual paper, so you can do the plaque and that kind of thing. Can you have an estimate on that last, just the last piece, how much that will cost? The community to get that certification, that piece of paper that says we did everything that we do up to the paper, that's, how much, you know how much that costs?
You know, I'm not going to give you the exact number right now. What I can tell you is, we have ran that number. And when you're doing a project of this magnitude, it's minimal, minimal. And one of the reasons the school board has struggled with past projects is, when you're doing something like Thackeray, that's teeny-tiny, you really feel the expense, because 50,000, 100,000 makes a difference. This project, I know it's minimal, but we can certainly, I know we have that number. And we've also built it in. So it is also one of those components that is just an expectation in the RFP that they're able to meet that. And when you're in the competition aspect, this is the right time to do it.
Okay, and my other question is, you, you put the size of high school to, for 1,500 students, based on projections that you have been provided by consultants for community growth. So my concern is that the size of the high school is built to meet the needs that we project that we're going to have for the current community that we have. And then I see on the list that part of this overall plan is substantial residential. So then I'm thinking, well, what are we going to do with those kids? Because, you know, TJ is, we all know, I mean, we got trailers, and Mount Daniels is difficult. And, and so it seems like we're taking on a project that's going to create, we're going to build problems for ourselves. So I'm just concerned about that.
Well, I mean, student growth, obviously, is always something that we're, you know, we're watching in the city. But again, the largest driver is single-family homes. And so, and I, and I say that, well, and then I, and I encourage you, you know, if you look at the property chart, that's where we are seeing a lot of our enrollment growth. What I will say, and we've said this at the last two community meetings, is that I think we're a small community, and we have a lot of unknowns. We said this last Saturday at the budget meeting. We do have two new developments that are opening in the fall. We will be watching them extremely close. We do know that Byron, you know, the Spectrum, all of those buildings have been true. Pearson is the outlier, but we don't know if it's an outlier. And so that's why, right now, we work really closely, and I commend the city staff to watch these developments. I can say at Northgate, we, you know, we've been spot on. Will it stay like that a year or two years from now? We continue to watch that trend. But the projection, and using the fiscal impact model that the city has, and then also using our data about student enrollment, that building was very accurate. So on these next two developments, which is the one on Broad Street and then the one on Maple, we'll be watching those buildings. You know, what is our student enrollment going to look like?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. What I'm actually, thank you for that, and I have seen a lot of those numbers. But what I was really asking about is, in, up on the chart there, it said substantial residential. So I'm actually talking about, because what you're talking about is, is, you know, the enrollment that is projected for the, what we're building. But then I see those kids, so what is the projection of how many students that this, quote, "substantial residential" will create for all of us in our schools to absorb? That's my question.
I think that's all, I think that's all part of this process. And just to give you an example, those of you that were at the ULI presentation, you know, they talked about graduate housing. And they talked about different types of housing. And until you really get into the project and we know what we have from the proposals, we don't know what that looks like. But certainly, you know, it's, until you really jump in and sign the agreement, I mean, and I think we've tried to say that all along, if it doesn't look right for the city, I think city council and school board will make the right decision. But we are watching all of that. And we're very, I'm aware, believe me, as much because I have to fund space for them in September, so.
I think we have the microphone here.
Just three quick questions, I hope. First, the current schedule calls for move-in completion fall of 2019.
Correct.
There was mention of some date in 2017 for something. But in any event, is groundbreaking scheduled for the summer of 2017 under the current schedule?
Well, what I would say right now, everything is tentative, because until you actually get through this process, that is the date we would love, because we know we have enrollment pressures, we know we're running out of space. The last thing we want to do is be talking about it 2021, and we're going to spend a half million dollars, a million dollars on trailers. And the other issue we have at Mason is that, you know, when you're looking at an HVA system and the, you're not talking about a half a million dollars, you're talking about 10 million, 20 million dollars. We're really trying hard not to over-invest in Mason. So 2019 is the target date. That's an aggressive date. I mean, that's being honest. It's aggressive, and we knew that when we, when we have set that in the RFP. That's where we would like to be, because we don't want to end up having to spend money on other projects just trying to get through Mason. And just to give an example, I mean, over the break, you know, we spent 50, $60,000 just fixing tiles on the floor, because the, the concrete is cracking, the tiles were all starting to lift. It's a tripping hazard. We didn't, we couldn't afford to do the whole building. But those issues, I mean, it's every break that we have. And those of you that have high schoolers know, we went for a small section this year with no heat in part of the building, and kids were wearing blankets. We were very fortunate that in that portion of the winter, it was warm enough outside that we could still have school. Otherwise, we would have been canceling school.
So whenever it starts, is it roughly a two-year?
Yes. Yeah, it's a two-year build.
Okay. And the second thing, parking. In some of the early meetings, I was talking about, was talking about parking facilities, either underground on campus or trying to work out a deal with UVA, Virginia Tech. The ridership on the orange line is way, way down, at least that was said then. Is the situation, I've been talking about this, is the situation that UVA, Virginia Tech are just waiting till 2021 when they can sell and make a lot of money? Or is there a possibility of working out a parking facility deal, four or five stories, whatever it would be?
Well, if you, if you look at the map of the site, I've kind of lost control of my clicker here. We are surrounded by a sea of parking. And so it is frustrating to think that we might spend a lot of money on structured parking here on the site when there is so much parking at the Womata site and at the UVA Tech site. So we've had discussions with them. The problem is that for any type of long-term agreement for parking on their site, they would sort of structurally meet our needs for the school, we've got to pay. And so then it becomes, what's cheaper? And, and so there's, there's no real easy answer on our neighbor's property, is the bottom line. But we, I think through this process, and one of the reasons we've engaged with our neighbors, is try to think of other cost-effective ways that we could do parking together. We're not there yet.
Okay, so that's one option, but if it doesn't work out, because they can sell and so on and so forth. Looking at the things you had up there, it would appear there's no outdoor parking. It's green space, commercial school, so is the thought underground parking under, under the new school?
That's a possibility. Underground parking is very expensive. And, and so part of the discussion about six acres to 10 acres gets into this discussion of, is the last little bit of land that you would want for commercial development, does that end up having a disproportionate cost for the school, because you need to push the parking underground or something like that? And so that's why I've described it as a range of acreage for the commercial development, because we're making some of those calculations as to what's, what's the best deal for the city.
And the last thing was, you know, you were talking about, you've gone over the pros and cons of selling the 10 or whatever acres versus leasing. Seems if you sell, you get some money upfront, but you lose control over what's there to an extent. You can try to structure the deal to limit what can be done, but especially in this area, you're probably buying litigation, a lot of underemployed lawyers around. If you, if you lease, you have more control, but as we've seen with recent controversies over certain types of business moving into the city, you're still perhaps buying litigation. So what's going on with your discussions in terms of pros and cons of selling versus leasing?
In the RFP, the Phase I RFP, we stated a preference for a lease structure, for the simple reason that we would like to have control at the end of the day. There are pros and cons, though. You know, you pay for anything. There's always a cost to certain future benefits. And so as part of our evaluation, we're trying to weigh the costs and benefits of lease versus fee simple sale. So that would be part of this process, but, and I think in the detailed RFP, we'll maintain that as an option for the proposers, and we'll continue that evaluation.
You'll continue to prefer the leasing?
No, we'll continue the evaluation of the pros and cons of lease versus fee simple So who has the mic? Yeah. So when you, when it's this side of the room, so if you have the mic, I think you can just go ahead and stand up.
Okay. Wyatt, are you planning to bond a referendum request for 112 million? Because the more I hear, the less sure I am what you're going to do. Second question is, when do we get to see the actual financial structure of this proposal that's huge? And we talked about everything else, including swimming pools, but the financing of this is going to affect the future of the city. When does the public get to see the proposed structure? Thank you.
When the public would see the proposed structure of the deal would be at the time of, of having an interim agreement in place. And then that would go out for public evaluation, and then that would be in the voter's knowledge before a voter's cast for the referendum. So...
For 112, is that what the referendum will be for?
That is what our current estimates for the cost of the school program is. So if that remains the case, that's what the bond referendum question would be.
Okay.
Yeah, hi. I was just unclear about the answers in the questions the woman back here gave, about the projected student population. When that study was done, did it include, did it include the residential component of this economic development site? Was any, is that part of that projection?
We had, we really use two projections. We have one, that's the natural birth rate, and that is the, where UVA looks at the students, the children who are born to the, in the City of Fall Church. So there's one projection chart for that. Then we work with the city on all the economic development, growth, and we take those two numbers and put them together. The great thing about a high school is, when you build a high school, there are ranges, which I know everybody knows this if you have children, because you build a building for 600 and somehow you put 700 there. And when you're looking at a high school, that range, even between 11 and 14, 11 and 15, 12 and 15, you have a range where you can go up or you can go down. It's just how you use the space.
That was...
So we have that built in. I mean, that, that's there.
But is it built in an increase in the residential, the significant residential population of this, the development of this site?
I think it's too early.
How big is, well, I mean, you're building a high school that's going to last 20, 30, 40 years, and at the same time, you either are or aren't going to do this economic development, which has a significant residential component.
Well, I...
How big is that residential component?
Well...
And regardless of, you know, how many kids are in there or not, you're adding a significant population.
Right.
Was that taken into consideration, that we're potentially adding, you know, how many residential units?
It is taken, it is taken into consideration, that 1,500. But one of the things that we would do, and we would have to do this before we go to referendum, we would know so much more than we know today. We don't know what the residential's going to look like. And I say that because what if it is, you know, housing for 50 and over, or there's a nursing home? That's considered residential, like the one that's next to Hilton Garden Inn. If it's graduate housing, those are very different in the amount of children we would get from those, that type of residential. Does it look more like the two new developments? Then we're going to look at the fiscal impact model. We would calculate all of that. And that's, again, one of those decision points that city council, school board, and the community would have, going into the referendum and knowing, this is how big the high school is, this is the projected enrollment, natural enrollment, and also what we expect from development.
But right now, you're planning for a 1,500...
Yes.
...student school.
Yes.
That 1,500 level, which will be filled or reached sometime in the future, we don't know exactly when.
Right.
We hope it will last 30 or 40 or however many years.
The projection is, right now, that it, that it would, that we're building...
How far, how far of that is...
Until we know what, what is actually being proposed here. Then that's where, where we've, why we've got to get through this process. When we know what that residential looks like, then you can go in and calculate what that number is. But what I can say...
You did, you did a study...
Right.
...of the projected population.
Yes.
The number that you come up at any given year in the future, how far under that 1,500 cap, I mean, do you bump up against it? Because you have, you're not, you're not taking any...
What I can...
Concrete consideration of this development.
Right. What I can say, yeah, is that if, if I could answer that definitively, I would be a millionaire in the United States, because school enrollment is...
But at some point, you still have to plug in a number.
Well, and we do.
Even if it's made-up number.
That's why we take, we take UVA, their number. What you've got to realize is, again, we're just talking about the high school. So when you put in residential, they're not all high school students. So even if you gain 80 students, and especially right now, they tend to be five years old and 10 years old, so your life, you're still looking 12 years out before those students hit the high school. So there's a lot more than just how many students come from a building. We also have to go in and really look at, are they still being distributed the way that they are now as well? And we look at all of those components. And when we know what's being proposed, we'll, we'll know so much more before we would go to referendum. Just rerunning all of those numbers, and that's why we have experts working with us. It's definitely not just Mr. Shields and I that are running all these numbers.
Somewhat related, because all this issue, and I have some doubts on your population projections, too, based on the type of residential units we have, how much are left for pure residences, and how much are left for basically high rises, et cetera, and apartments. But the question I have is, how sensitive is this design and this cost to a change in population? Let me say, let's say you were planning for 1,200 and not 1,500 in the high school. Historically, we've had up to 1,900, back down to 1,200 when my kids were here, and we're going back up to 23, 24 right now. If you planned for 12 and 15, what difference? What, how sensitive is the cost of this to a change in the population, let's say, from What, how sensitive is the cost of this to a change in the population, let's say from 12 to 15? Is it 10% of the cost? Is it 15% of the cost? That would give you an idea of how sensitive this is. If you were planning for 1,200, would this be 70 million instead of 100 million, or would it be 95 million of 100? I think that's an important case to.
Yeah, the way that we have, and we've made adjustments even from the first RFP to where we are now, in really going and looking at what is, what is the program that could be a building for 1,100 students, but it could be a building for 1,400 students? And it, again, is how you use the space. And so does every teacher have their own classroom 25 or 30 years from now, if we see huge growth? Or do you have teachers, when they're on their planning block, someone else is teaching in their room? That's very typical in urban schools. That's not necessarily where we want to be, but again, 30 years from now, I can't stand before you and say that I would know what our student enrollment is going to look like, and I wish that I could, but there's nobody in the country that will give us that number. And UVA hesitates to even do the projected enrollment at 20 years. They prefer to do 15. And that's about, and you'll notice if you look at Weldon Cooper, and again, this is what they do for a living. They actually switch to cohort models, which means they don't break it down by grade level after the first five years, because there's so many different factors that go into student enrollment, and that's why it's so challenging for schools. But the way we're designing this building is that we could have 1,100 students, we could have 1,400, but the space usage, as you grow, will change in how we utilize the space of the building. And that, we've already, and what I'm saying is, we really have already cut back. We're not building the Taj Mahal where we're planning for 15 classrooms for every single person. And again, we've worked with our teachers, where we're looking at having common spaces, because our teachers now, if you give them a choice, one of the things they said, they'd love to be able to go outside more, and have class outside, and have commons areas for certain projects. So we've already done that, and, and what we're asking for in this building. But until, again, we get, get through this next step, we won't know what they bring us.
One thing, you know, the question of enrollment growth is one that we spend a lot of time on, and, and the school administration and Dr. Jones really pushed for this, to give this granular data of where, what housing types generate students. And so we really have great transparency. We, you know, and I can cite the numbers out. Condos generate .1 per unit. It's, you know, one, one unit per, one student per 10 units. Our newer apartments, it's about .2. Pearson Square alone is .4. Single-family homes, .66. And we, we know those numbers, we kind of live and breathe them. But they also change over time. Apartments, our old apartments, they were generating .15 10 years ago. They're joint, they're generating .33 today. Our single-family homes were generating .4 10 years ago. They're generating .66 today. So mark, you know, some, a lot of what's happening for enrollment growth is cyclical, that has no policy drivers to it at all. The mixed-use development does have policy drivers. Those require a legislative approval, and that's why we've come to know these numbers so clearly as, as best we can, so we know when we're making a decision on a mixed-use project, what the impacts can reasonably be projected to be. But that, I guess that's the only thing I would jump in to add, is we do spend a lot of time to try to understand these dynamics.
That, my only, my only point is, you know that a certain project is going to be built there, and you know those numbers that you say you know them pretty well by now.
Yeah.
But you don't know what's going to go in, into this site.
Yeah.
But you know that it's going to be a range, it may be so many, you know, three-bedroom apartments, and one-bedroom apartments, and this, you know, all those multiples you talked about. You at least have a range. Is that part of, was that part of the consideration, or is this just a big blank in the projection of the future student population? I know there's all of these vague things you can't know, but there's also things you can know.
Right.
And you could at least plug, you know, plug in a range to give you an idea, was, is that, is that part of it?
In terms of the projections for enrollment that our capital program is built upon, yes. Right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the basic answer.
1,500 student level you're talking, I don't mean to be argumentative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that 1,500 projection assumes that there's going to be residential as part of this development. Now, how much?
It assumes.
It does assume that there would be residential as part of the high school redevelopment process.
That's what I, that's what I was trying to.
Okay. Mr. Lamone, and you have the microphone, good.
Yes. I understand the granularity you have on the different types of housing and what kinds of students they generate, but there's a, there's a longer-term trend that I don't, I don't know whether Weldon Cooper is actually taking into account. And that's the birth rate, which peaked in 2007 on a national level, and it's, and it's been coming down ever since, and it's the lowest level it's been, I think, since this, the government has been keeping track of the birth rate. And from what I understand, the, the projection that Weldon Cooper made for the last two years for, for the growth in student enrollment is, was overstating what actually happened. So there is a, there's a long-term trend here, and even though you're very granular now, you've got to take that trend into account.
I think that's a good point. Just speaking personally, sometimes you get so immersed in your own data that you lose track, that things can change, and they do change. So I think that's, I think that's a really good point.
I might add, that's one reason we, we actually work with them every October and run brand-new numbers, just so that we're always having a fresh eye on that. And the hardest grade level for us is kindergarten. And it's because we can know how many children are born in Fall Church, but how many are moving in. And, and that's why, the year before last, we, it was maybe two years that they're all running together, but huge class of kindergarteners. And then the next year, we were prepared for another big class, and it was small. And that, that's always our biggest challenge. This year, we normally enroll 80 or 90 kindergarteners, we've already pre-enrolled 141. We've never enrolled more than 80 or 90. But does that mean we just have more people pre-enrolling earlier? We're trying to, you know, message better and, and get that pre- enrollment number? We won't know truly until September, how many children are going to show up in the summer and actually enroll. And that, that's probably where you see the number change the most, is kindergarten. And it's just, it's very difficult to project in a city that's growing and has an attractive school system with a move-in rate.
Any more questions? Yes, Tina.
I know, I think I know that you can't answer in detail, but when the RFP responses come in, there's very precise requirements for school. Must be this whole long list. But you said the development was more open. Did they respond with a relatively high degree of detail, or generic to be fleshed out at a later time?
In our, in our RFP, we asked for square footages of the uses, heights of buildings, basic, you know, we, we asked for things like that in that Phase 1 RFP. And so we got that information. And so some of the things we'll be considering in the Phase 2 RFP is whether we want to provide more, more direction with the development side. And I know that that will be of interest to the public in terms of those pieces. So we'll want to get some of those things nailed down and get, at least in terms of our draft, and get that out to the public as soon as we can.
Detail the, the draft. Thanks.
Wyatt, if this is approved and we're going forward with construction, is this project overseen by the school system, or is it overseen by the city? Who's responsible? Who's going to control this?
In terms of the governance, the City Council and the School Board have made this whole procurement process a joint process. So nothing can happen without the consent of both bodies. Once we get through the approval process, then there will be some division in terms of the administration of the, of the approvals that have already occurred at the governance level. Then the School Board would manage the school construction piece, and the city would manage the private development piece.
Given the problems we've had with Mount Daniel.
We will work very closely with each other.
Does that cause you any concern that the city is giving up management of a large portion of this project?
Well, the problems at Mount Daniel are specifically a land use approval process with Fairfax County.
It could have been predicted.
Okay. But what we do have is, by code and by practice, the schools manage school construction projects. And I do think for in terms of, and this, and the city manages its projects. And in terms of accountability and clarity of roles, I think it's important to keep those roles assigned very clearly. And so I think that's the way that this would proceed as well.
But where has the accountability been to date?
Well, you know, I will take full accountability personally. I recommended that we issue the bonds. So for that piece of it, you know, those bonds have been issued for Mount Daniel. I've stated the reasons why I made that recommendation, but I take full accountability for that. And in terms of, you know, going through the land use process, it is a school project, and they're, and they're accountable for the delivery of, of the school, of the construction program. That is the way our system works. And, you know, I think we're, I'm still optimistic we're going to make progress on that, but we need to get through the county approval process. Yeah.
Is somebody working on a zoning district for this property?
The, the entitlement process could start at any time. We could start that today if we wanted to. What we anticipate that we will do, though, is go through the Phase 2 proposal, if the Council and School Board elect to do that, and then at the end of that process, begin the entitlement process, which would include a comp plan amendment, it would include a master plan for the site, like a small area plan, and it would include the zoning. And so that process, I would envision, if things go per schedule, that would start this summer.
I don't think we have any zoning classification now that fits what is being contemplated.
Well, the, it's possible that what's contemplated would fit under our B2 zoning with a special exception. Now, whether that's the best zoning vehicle for us to use for this project, I think is, is worthy of further discussion, but that is an option. Yeah.
You mentioned earlier that the taxpayers would be responsible for five cents on the dollar, assuming the economic development went through. And I'm wondering if that five-cent figure is based on the assumption that ha, you said there was a range of half to two-thirds. Does that five cents on the dollar reflect that half of the cost would be offset by economic development, or two-thirds? Do you have a range there of what the taxpayers would expect?
That actually, that is the two-thirds scenario. So that, that five cents, I think, is probably a best-case scenario. But again, I think that those numbers should be viewed as, these are some modeling that we're doing, a lot of things could change, but we felt it was important to get some of our initial thinking and our initial modeling out to the public, to get some reaction to, and also just so people are aware of, of the numbers that we're working with. But I do put a big caveat with them, in that a lot of things can change. And, but I think that it's useful information, at least, I think at this point in the planning process.
And so do you have a range? If it's, if you, if five cents is the best case, do you have a range for what, what the worst case might be?
Well, I mean, if, so if you take our modeling, which is to cover the 6 million in debt service, which is 30 years, debt at 4% interest rate, and those types of assumptions, that's 15 cents. So half of the coverage would be, you know, eight cents, or seven to eight cents. Again, very rough and, and just based on, on modeling. Yeah, so if there's no development, or, you know, or if market conditions change, it, you know, it could be higher.
When, when the referendum for the MEH construction went before my time, what was the tax implication advertised at that point for, for this project? And what did it end up being?
So that was in 2003, and, and my recollection was that it was a big number. I don't know if any, anyone remembers what, what was advertised at that time?
The expectation, the expectation was an increase of 17% in the tax rate.
17%.
That didn't occur right away, but if you look at what the change is today, it's about 17%.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and one thing to, you know, what happened with Mary Ellen Henderson is that when it was, when those bonds were issued, what happened was a huge increase in assessed value. We had a 21% year increase and a 13% increase. It was the year of, of the housing boom, and so we actually cut tax rates. But per Mr. Sharp's point, what the, what the homeowner actually paid was exactly what was advertised when the referendum was passed. It just didn't show up in the rate, it showed up in your assessed value. Okay.
Have you also looked at the capacity for things coming from the Reckon Parks area, and how they might be accommod, how some of that might be accommodated in the gym and other spaces you're anticipating now at the schools?
Well, I would say that it's been the intent from the beginning that the new structure is a community structure with community and Reckon Park activities in it, and it will serve the needs of the broad community. I think that's a, a design, you know, built into the expectations for the project. Now, in terms of additional open space, this is, this, the site is, you know, we're going to be using every square inch of this site. I think that it is reasonable to expect that there will be, you know, some public areas and some, some open space. You know, we, we would seek that, but there's, there'll be trade-offs with that. The more of that there is, the less tax yield there'll be, and so, you know, we'll work through those decisions. And I think that piece of it can also be part of the entitlement process as well. Okay, I think we, we will stay here to answer any further questions. We've probably gotten to the end of, of what the advertised time was. Want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Mayor Tarter, would you like to make any concluding remarks, or?
[laughter]
Yeah. I think that says it. Dr. Jones, any?
No. Just thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks.